Today's Tampa Town Political Work Session at 1:40 on April 24th. Thank you all for being here. We'll start off with our department updates and our trainer, Mike Green. Mike?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm trying to keep this brief since we all heard it once. Just to give you an update, third quarter is over. We had our investment committee two weeks ago. Overall performance is up from last year by roughly, we generated about $690,000 in total earnings through the first three quarters of this year versus 450,000 last year. It's around numbers. And we're probably going to come in, total earnings for the year, LGIP and a portfolio around 950,000, which is about, just a little bit more than $100,000 better than we had initially last year. That's what it looks like at this point. Discounting LGIP because they've already spent a little bit more, always reading them over, and we pretty much capped out while we're investing. So those numbers should be fairly predictable. Overall, since we last talked, the investment portfolio moved up slightly three basis points, not terribly dramatic. But just to give you a sense, we had one bond that matured. I reinvested it and raised the portfolio two basis points. How do you like that?
You are really good.
I am really good. Otherwise, not much has changed. What has really been kind of staggering, and I saw you two weeks ago, in two weeks, bonds have increased three-year and five-year about 20 basis points. I can buy today a five-year bond at 3.4.
Buy 10-year bonds at 3.
Yes.
Haven't been able to do that since.
So it's quite an interesting marketplace. So overall, as far as the portfolio is concerned, we are pretty much at max. So the only thing that will happen over the next quarter is just reinvesting as bonds get mature. The interesting piece there is we have about $650,000 in touring in the next month. And we have, on the latter, we have about $700,000 going under the over-60-month category. So in theory, if there's some really good rates out there, we can actually invest at the higher window if we so desire. So it'll be interesting to see what happens over the next 30 days. As far as the business is concerned, the investment committee wants to continue to monitor the rate of inflation. The rate of inflation both for the quarter and for the year was 2.2%. So our portfolio or our investments are tracking slightly below that by 10 basis points.
Where's LGIP now?
Pardon me?
Where'd LGIP go?
LGIP has just gone up to 2.4. For the quarter, paid out from 1.4. We did, our whole business was HHIS as far as the cash. Silas came in and gave a presentation. I think there was some information that was going in, I think on both parts. There is the interesting part in all of this is if, there are a number of funds that basically budget their monies, and I think it's partially because of budget way, but if it could be segregated because they don't spend it, I just wish I did. The difference to the county is if those funds could be recognized at 4 million, look at the budget as what they're really going to use and characterize the others in a more conservative manner, so not taking the money away from them. I looked at it over the last five years and just looked at five funds. It would have generated, if I could have invested those monies in the over-60-month category, it would have created an extra half million dollars in income for the county. Now, I don't know practically how that is, but it's certainly something that is significant enough because the, what we're seeing now, even with LGIP, is when it was coming closer, then the significance becomes less important. Well, what we're seeing right now between LGIP and five-year is over a percentage point. And so it is significant enough to at least continue to monitor, I guess, the best way possible. Silas was going to go back and look. I mean, Silas, I thought did a really nice job. The, one of the concerns he had is risk. I think the risk is, oh, can I have access to the monies? Those are two independent things. There is no risk. It's just a matter of the money and availability and when it's going to be used. You know, the risk is if, if there's no more risk on a five-year or six-year bond than there is on a one-year bond, it happens to deal with liquidity. And at this point in time, the county has no liquidity issues that I'm aware of. Anyway, US bank balances, we continue to monitor those. We're going to continue to do it. Mike has said he's going to take a look at it again, but quite frankly, they went back to the rough. And again, all that means is that we don't monitor it. It costs the county money. Right now, it's costing the county on average between $30,000 and $40,000 a year in poor cash management. Last piece, fallen bond ratings. Continue to track that. One of the things the investment committee asked for was, in the next meeting, was more of a schedule of what those are, and I'm in the process of preparing that. It's right now, it's really interesting. Some of the others I reported on earlier have actually gotten better ratings and gone back to AA, but some others have become A. So it roughly represents about 8% of the portfolio. Some of them are quite nice, like IBM, stuff like that, that I'm not really concerned about, but nevertheless, it's something that both the investment committee and this body needs to be aware of, and I'll continue to monitor that for the rest of it. Again, and right now, the investment focus primarily is, at this point, strictly reinvesting. As the bonds mature, we will go ahead and invest them at a better rate. The investment committee's overall thought was, as we see the LGIP and the bond market, let's not necessarily do anything at this point. Let's just continue to monitor it. If we continue to see bigger spread, we may want to look at opening up a little bit more under liquidity requirements based on the investment policy. We could raise it another $5 million under the current liquidity issue. And we just felt, I think unanimously, that that was not something that needed to be put on the table at this time. Let's just get through the budget process, let's continue to watch the bond market and reassess it.
Well, when LGIP's at 0.5, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's amazing. I mean, there was a, it's imminent, it's just crazy. So it's, I can't even predict what's going to happen next week. I wouldn't even try. If I could, I would.
We'd be rich and we wouldn't be sitting here.
That is correct. We could all retire. So, quick summary, you guys had all this stuff, so you got to spend over an hour hearing this. I didn't want to be whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And good job. Nicely done. Thank you. All right. And so let's move on to the CCI, which is the preliminary consent agenda. So we already have a chance to look at it. Do we feel, congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Have a chance to look at it? Do we have any others we'd like to pull off?
I've read all the materials. I haven't seen any things or jumps out at this point.
So then we'll continue, we'll have these all moved forward as we're implementing consent agenda. We'll move on with item D, the non-consent agenda items, other topics of discussion. Item one, which is the approval of proposed rate increase 3.5% by Anheal County Solid Waste Department for Ecology Western Oregon, effective July 1st, 2018.
So I don't feel like I'm going to be able to answer all the questions that you guys are going to ask, so I brought help. So I'm going to have your questions. I did, I brought them. They can answer your questions. Would you guys like to come on up here and talk about your increases?
I'd like to be sworn in first.
Oh, would you? Yeah, that was pretty fun.
I just want to get one.
Well, I'll sit.
Oh, thanks.
You're a backdoor.
This is Carl Peters. He is with Ecology, and this is Dave.
Well, that's half of what I was going to say.
Okay, so now this is tied to the CPI, correct?
Correct.
The Portland CPI, and it's based on the, it's based on revenue, and the formula's pretty well written and strong. There's not a whole lot of, not a whole lot of subjective determinants that go into this, so it's pretty rote, am I right?
In most years, I'm sure you're correct. There is CPI language in our contract, and basically says if you, if we want to request something other than the CPI, it goes through an approval process. And that's the situation we're in this year. We, based on our projections, we don't think the CPI would be enough to get us back into the range, so we're requesting a 3.5% adjustment. It's not, it's not tied to the CPI this year.
Does that happen before? I don't know if I remember that.
It does happen. The last time, I believe, was 2009, 2010. I think both of those years, we had adjustment requests that were, that were not CPI's.
And you said just get you into the range. Could you remind me again what the range is?
Certainly. We have a calculation that's laid out. It's called the operating ratio. It's sort of the inverse of what an operating margin would be. So rather than talking about 10%, the operating ratio is 90. So the range is 85 to 91, with a target of 88.
And that would bring you, that 3.5% would bring you to that?
Back inside of the range, as many.
I don't have any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
When you, you said in 2009, you'd do, how big would it be increased? The CPI is 2.2, is that accurate?
So one of the challenges for us is that the CPI in the agreement won't be released until mid-May. We do our rate review packets in March for an April 1 submission, so we have to sort of guess on what we think the CPI might be. If we think that will be enough, then we just apply to take it, and once it comes out, we get to see what it is. Sort of like Christmas coming late.
So, but based on your calculations, you judged that we're going to be under by a percentage point?
Right. We think the CPI will be probably in the, in the neighborhood of 2.5%. So it doesn't get us back to the range.
This is all driven by, if you watch the news or read any of these recycling markets, that just been a new challenge, this national sword, which was their way of saying, we don't want the garbage anymore. So they identified 24 different materials. We sent them, they said, well, we don't want those anymore, including one of the biggest ones for us, which is a sort of mixed paper. And when I say yes, I'm not talking about the coffee, I'm talking about the United States and America. This is a very problematic issue. A lot of people have their horses tied to that wagon, and it's proven to be quite a bit of a challenge. As a company, we've been fortunately kind of divested a little bit before this all hit, so we have some outgo. But when you're in Oregon, and you're kind of landlocked like we all are in here, and you're not sitting by a port where you have a lot of shipping advantages, you're literally tied to what's, what's happening in the local area. And it's been a challenge. The biggest challenge, really, I mean, so they got rid of a bunch of material, but the real challenge was contamination. They dropped it down to a half percent. And truly, there are, next to no facilities in the northwest, obviously probably in the US, that can make that number, a half a percent of contamination. That's why it's, it's been such a challenge. And so what Mercer's trying to do to clean their material up, they put double the number of people on the sort lines, and slow the belt down to half the speed, trying to make sure they get everything. Because if it makes it over onto a ship and shows up in China, and they go, hunk, hit a bail, and there could be just, there could be a wrong type of recycling and another bail of recycling, and they will reject the entire order. We don't, as a company, we've learned, don't buddy up with anybody's ship, because if one of their bales fails, they'll reject your shipment. And so you have all these companies that truly, you know, we do business with great companies. There's just, obviously, there's nothing good companies in this area for recycling. But you just don't know to let ship this over there, and you can be fined $50,000. And there's no control. When the Chinese look at it, they just say, we're going to fine you $50,000. And then you've got to find another place to set those loads. So the net impact for us, and honestly for everybody, which is why you're here, all these community progress, I mean, I could go on and on and on, and drone about what folks have been doing. The problem is that all these, all of us used to experience a positive end that buy you $10 a ton, and now you're being charged up to $100. So what you hear me saying is what everybody's figured out is actually cheaper to throw every bit of recycling away than to process it. We fundamentally believe that is the wrong approach. You know, we're, the great thing about us, we're employee-owned. We think that's a big deal to us, and we always try to say that anytime we're trying to folks. The other important thing for us is we're not landfill company. If we're a landfill company, we'd be sitting in front of you going, yeah, we could probably throw away. But that's one, that's not our livelihood. And two, most importantly, I still believe socially and economically, it's not the thing to do. People love to recycle, and we have to keep doing everything we can to make it happen. And the real challenge most of the time with folks, it's not that we can't recycle, it's just a little bit more expensive. And what, you know, what, a lot of, what's happening in a lot of these communities where you're seeing big ones, you know, like $2 a home, we're talking about 70 cents, including our normal increase, just so we're clear on a 32 gallon. We're not asking for a big number here. But some of these communities, you know, Washington County just did $2.10 a month on every home, 15%, 12%, 12% on all commercial businesses, just to try to, you know, get up and get up on top of it. And so we're actually really proud of the fact that we're able to keep it small. You know, we're not going to be going, oh, we might come around later again. We're not, we're not here to do that. But it is, it's, it's been difficult. So in the short term, I want to make sure too, because the newspaper didn't capture the essence of what I was saying when I met with the city of Vinville, so I appreciate the opportunity to say that. When I was talking about contamination and materials that were not being accepted, I wasn't saying that we needed to pull them out, and I made it, I thought I made it clear at the city council meeting that we didn't need to do anything right now, because all of the recycling facilities are still accepting it. So why should we go through the process and try and educate, clean it up when they still go in there? Actually, we're hopeful to keep working with the recyclers to keep recycling everything and not have to pick it apart. Some of these communities that have stopped pulling it out, we just find that unnecessary. It's capable, I think people love to recycle, it makes them feel good, and I think they work to us. And when I say us, I mean collectively us, as a provider service to make sure that it's still possible. And so we're excited about being able to do that. So it just, it just costs a little bit more than it was before. But it can still happen, and we look forward to continuing that. And so that's, that's why we're at 3.5, it's probably, it could have, could, who knows? CPI could have come in at 3, and we'd have been so close. But it's just, we want to make sure that it's viable ongoing concern, and we can continue to do the things that we do, you know, with a lot of the partnership things that we do with the county, you know, hosting the cleanup, the provide site, provide staffing, because we get the value of what we provide to the community, and we want to make sure that we do things to give back. So that's what we're trying to do, maybe as soon as we can.
Carl, one question, one question. Have you seen a lot of the manufacturers of the products and the containers changing their manufacturing streams, actually to help do away with that contamination, to standardize products, so it doesn't?
You know, if you look at how they do a lot of things, it's not, it's, this is a bigger problem than us, so I understand, it's very, your question. You have places like up in Canada or Europe, where it's more like, a lack of a word, stewardship kind of approach to things. If you generate the material, you own that cost of having to be able to recycle it. So in Canada, a lot of these areas up there, the manufacturers actually pay for recycling, because if they put it out there, they've got to figure out how to bring it back.
Especially if it's weird, if it is, if the current system can't accommodate it, if there's a requirement that manufacturers have to help figure out how to process it.
Yeah, and diversion probably shouldn't be measured in a different way, because, you know, I'm sure we've all had orders from Amazon, and we just moved here, just, maybe just right eight weeks ago. And so she ordered something, so we ordered something, I'm telling you, it was about this size, and it came in a box, somehow this big, and felt this tall. I was like, what did you buy? When we moved here, it was that way. I remember opening up, I have a Playstation, I admit it. And I said, don't forget to pack this, and it put it in its own box. Diversion is, is an interesting thing, people are looking at what they recover as opposed to sometimes what you dispose of. And sometimes we look at packaging, you see Amazon doing it now, where things show up in a little plastic wrap. Well, if you think about it, you can wind it up really small, and it takes up such a little area of space. But it's good stuff, it's exciting.
Thank you for that explanation, Dave. Thank you. Any other questions? Are we moving now on to consent agenda? All right, thank you very much, and welcome to the neighborhood call.
Thank you so much. Just if I could get the deer to quit showing up on my new landscaping. I was talking to my neighbor out back, they're retired couple, I said, throw something, shoot, it's okay, it's my yard.
Poor boy, mere landscaping.
All right, we'll move to item two on D2, which is the approval of proposed 95-ton CPI increase by Anheal County Solid Waste Department for Riverbend Landfill Tipping Fees, effective July 1st, 2018.
So I didn't ask Nick to come in and talk to us, because I felt this was pretty self-explanatory, and these guys took care of it for me. You didn't understand why, where they're pressing, they're just going with the CPI increase, or what they think's going to be close to CPI increase. So I didn't see, when we, we voted SWAC voted to recommend approval of this one. The reason we didn't vote to recommend this one is because we didn't have a quorum, because we had two people leave, and then Dave is on the board, and so when he stepped back to present, we then didn't have a quorum, or we would have passed it, or just wanted to. So I don't, I can attempt to ask a question, answer questions for Riverbend, but basically, they're, they're running into the same, some of the same considerations as Ecology as well. And honestly, I am thinking that Waste Management, new recalling, is going to end up doing an emergency one later on. Kind of, kind of listening to everybody at the point, they're going to be coming to the board at a later time as well.
Do we have any other questions?
Is Waste Management coming back with their rate increase at a different time?
So Waste Management Holliday is different than Waste Management Riverbend.
Right.
Yes. I don't know for sure. They may or may not. They said that they're fine as of this year, and they're not asking for another increase, but they may invoke that at a later time in an emergency situation. I ask those questions too. I'm interested.
All right, we'll move on to consent agenda. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Yeah? Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's a good job.
If he weren't, if he weren't, must finish doing SWAC, he could have voted.
We'll move on to item D3, which is the discussion of the Anheal County Transit Area Board Directors Action Item regarding the Free Fair Day Report, effective August 6, 2018. Cynthia?
Yes.
Here. Do we have any discussion on that, or is that, when we move on to the next?
The only question, Cynthia, is that a normal, is that a national free ride day?
No. It would be something we'd be creating to recognize. We thought it would be nice to combine recognizing people who've contributed to the transit system, through your serving committee, volunteer, or some other thing. And the sixth is actually Mark Schiffman's birthday, and so August 6th, and he passed away, and we thought, well, you know, sometimes it's a good time. So we'll recognize him. And there's a few others I think we have to recognize. Gwen, who runs the volunteer partner in Carlton, she's, you know, she's not going to be doing that too much longer, and she's put in over 20 years of service, and pretty dedicated service. And I think a few others who were involved in the early years. And then we thought at the same time, we could offer Free Fair Day, you know, do something nice for the customers, because we really have to do that. A lot of systems will do things like, you know, the old rider, or some kind of a thing, they'll have, you know, cooking some coffee at the transit center, you know, and then have, but I thought we could do a press release and talk about the people who've contributed, and then, you know, we had worked out all the details. But if we did it as an ongoing annual event, then you don't have to vote on it every year. We can just.
Okay, so are you okay putting out, you know, all the consent agenda?
Well, you're going to be discussing this at your YCTA board address meeting, so these are just discussions.
Okay. So, so item four, which is the discussion of the agreement through Anheal County Transit Area Board of Directors and CTS Software for the Purpose of New Demand Response Schedule Software in the Amount of $3,140. So Cynthia, did you hear that?
Did everybody, you should have gotten this a couple of weeks ago, except for the portion of the software licensing piece. And it's, you know, this is their proposal, it's kind of a pretty large document, but...
Then in essence, based on all of the review, this is the one that was most satisfactory?
It was.
To get all the things that we definitely judged were...
Yeah, and a couple factors played, I mean, there were quite a few factors. I think we received, I should have said all the details in here hopefully, with six interested vendors, and we narrowed it down to two, and ended up going with CTS, both based on cost, also based on the, their system is, it's a really good system from the backside, when you're actually, you know, her staff that you're working with. It has all the things that we need. It has the reporting components, it has, and it also, their soft, their customer service side is, seems to be excellent, and First Transit has worked with them in other properties, and they've been, they've been pretty happy with their service. The other advantage to them was that, well, I mean, all of them offer similar things, but CTS, I just, they just sort of rose to the top, and their cost was in line with what we thought it should be, and it was actually a little bit less than the others.
Cynthia, you want to introduce our two persons?
I can actually do that one.
Would you join in? Do you have, if we can find another chair?
Yeah, this is Don Swang, he's the regional manager for First Transit, and Renee Coro is the general manager for ours.
Nice to meet you. We hear your name.
Yeah.
We can count on the face to the name.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming. Thank you for being here. It's nice to meet you both.
Yeah, whenever there's a problem, just raise your hands.
Yeah.
She also gets all the credit.
So let's see what else. I know, Christian, as far as the service agreements and those things, did you get the answers to the question I was from?
We're working on it.
We're still working on it.
There's some details related to that, but I, you know, hopefully, if the board is supportive of us selecting this, we can work out all the details.
Yeah, worst case, if we're not ready by Thursday's meeting, we might ask the board to approve it, subject to the final review approval of our office, like we've done for regular commission and items in the past.
But it satisfies everything we're looking for, so it's just a matter of...
So far, I mean, I think we'll be able to work out the questions that we have.
Yeah, functionality, that's all, Cynthia is.
Yeah, that's the main thing. Now, it is a cloud-based system, which I think maybe, I don't know how many systems like that you have at the county, though it's not housed on our servers. And part of the reason for that is, we, a lot of the customers have medical issues due to HIPAA, and it's actually better for us to have a entity like CTS who's been doing this for a long time, 20-plus years. They have a very secure system and are able to keep all of that in, you know, private and the way it's supposed to be. Also, you tend to get, you get the updates and, you know, automatically as part of the service agreement. We are, I'm proposing in here that we're going to pay three years of the service agreement as part with the grant, and this is a 100% grant funded as part of the technology grant. So I thought if more, I can pay of the annual cost upfront, that's what I wanted to do. So they, they had a couple of different ways that they did their pricing, but we ended up landing on the one that I shared with you, because that, that way we'll cover that. So the one thing that isn't included in this is that we will have mobile data terminals that go in buses, and this is just an advanced spot, so it covers 10 vehicles, and they recommended a certain style. I did meet with IT and more than once, and they were involved in some of the open hours when we were meeting with all the vendors. And this just seems like it's, we aren't getting a, you know, $3,000 MDT like the police have, because it's actually in our, our work, it doesn't really make sense. If we ended up, also, we ended up going with a different vendor when we do our RFP, it will make it easier also in the sense to implement, because, no, that's not what I meant to say, but it is true, I should finish my thought, or whatever. But the MDTs, what we're planning to do is have First Transit actually purchase those, and then they will just add it to our invoice, and then it'll be paid for with a grant. So it's not part of this proposal to purchase the hardware, so just the software.
So does that become the property of First Transit or the county?
It would be our property, because we'd be paying for it. So when they, if they were not chosen for the next round, then we would take, we would get the MDTs. We would keep them and give them to the next vendor, that would happen. The other advantage that he mentioned, and I don't think I put my role, reason for doing this, really, is so that the county is, owns that information. When you, when we originally hired First Transit back in 2012, there was, it was quite a chore from what I'd been told, transferring all the information from, like, all the rider information, from the whole, the two nonprofits, then to them. You know, they have all that on their system, and they own the system, you know, it can, you know, let's, you know, it can turn into sort of a... it can turn into sort of a mess. And so this way, the county owns it, they own the information, they own the, you know, access to that information. And then it's just a cleaner transfer or transition if you have to transition.
Okay. Any questions about item number four?
I just have one and I think maybe either Renee or Don will be appropriate to answer this. You know, for the customers' use of this, for the CTS system, a lot of the customers will either have their broadband interface, broadband connection or cellphone connection. First Interstate, because it's cloud-based, what kind of redundancies First Transit have in spots? So if you lose one, if you lose your backbone connection, your connection with the internet? And if you're the actual hoster that's doing a lot of work in dispatch, if you lose your connection to the internet, how do you service, how do you get to the service on the cloud?
Can I answer part of that? I should refer part of it to you. They're hosting it, CTS will host it. The one thing we haven't done yet is we haven't secured the entity that's going to provide the data plan. CTS has given me some advice and I did talk with IT staff about like, could we get a good deal with Verizon if we go with them? He said, he recommended a whole way that you can do this to save money for the data plan. This is not the fixed route, real-time info. This is just scheduling software for all the demand response, dial, ride, parent transit and that sort of thing. Now, as far as what the, if I understand your question right...
And it's hosted in the cloud and the network connection goes down.
Goes down.
How do you continue to operate since you don't have a, you don't have...
It'll be whoever our data plan is with. And we, assuming it will probably be Verizon.
Part of the requirement would be that they provide redundant, redundant paths.
We haven't, we don't have that in version. And so, yeah. But, and what do you, what does First Transit use currently?
We back everything up locally also. Like every machine that we have in the office now is backed up. So that we can't lose data. So it's not just simply in the cloud, it's also on the machines.
So there's a local instance.
Right.
And we can do that with this one. That was one of the options. One of the downsides to doing that is... I don't understand why. But we had quite a long discussion and I can go back to my notes.
Yeah, well, can you tell me just sort of exist?
I'm totally not.
How it's done is right around, just so it that...
But making sure it doesn't, if it does go down, then what do we do and how do we...
But Cynthia, that sort of line was, well, you and I talked about how mission critical is this? If it went down and it didn't come back up for a couple of days or a week, you indicated that you'd still be able to operate pretty much.
Well, because that happens now with our current system.
And it's backed up, once the systems are up and running again, then you can reinstall it. And you'll be in a, you know, you'll have to function without it for hopefully a short amount of time, if possible. But you could continue the function. Yeah, the system we use now is internet-based also. So, so we have the redundancy in there already set up. It's a, it's a different vendor. We do like CTS a lot better, particularly for the size of a project. But when we started, what we're using now was the best in our minds. But what we found was CTS is they provide far better customer service and support than simply those, which is what we're using.
I wish they did the fixed route side, but that's not something they do. But I did check with the potential vendors when we get ready to do the impairment for the fixed route. And they, they're all familiar with CTS and they can work with CTS. So any of them that are currently on our list that have shown an interest, I don't think will have a problem with the interface of that. There's not a lot of interface actually, but there's more like two different types of system that will be housed on the same, on the MDTs together. But there are some things that are in there.
As long as, as long as since it is mission, I'm grateful as long as the service will be retained. That's how it's kind of really going to be.
Okay, any further questions? Then we'll move on to item D5.
I don't have the agenda front of which one is it.
It's the purchase of the transit.
Oh, good. I made, I got, I got copies of the invoices. I don't know, I'll give you, I have six there, I think. So this was one of the buses that when I, in part of the process of trying to figure out how to fill our gaps with new buses, I had sent out a plea to other Oregon transit providers. And two responded in the most recent email I had sent out. And one was Sweet Home who gave us a bus, a mid-sized bus. And then Woodburn offered this bus, which is actually, you know, engine's in good shape, the transmission's in good shape, tires, all of that. And so we actually went over to look at it and they let us just bring it over and show it to the mechanics. And it's, it's not, you know, a bus that I would necessarily want to go out and say, oh, I want to buy this bus. But it's a backup bus or especially a Memphis, it might be good because it has 36, 35 or 36. So it seats more people in almost...
1,500 horsepower.
And it does have a bike rack and it has good timing. Even if we decided, eh, we don't really want to use it, we can, we can capitalize those things and probably make up some...
Any further discussion on that? Uh, on to item D6, the discussion of the request by Anheal County Transit Board Directors to approve funding for First Transit to lease four mid-sized buses for six months in the amount of $115,400 per year.
Okay, so the proposal was to lease four buses from, we have two options basically in this memo. We got a chance to look at it. Here is the Arbach bus, which is a low-floor smaller bus that's like a 16-passion. We would utilize it on our dial ride. And then we did look at high-floor buses, which are Star Trans buses and they're a little less expensive. The reason I proposed the low-floor is because in our planning process, we ultimately want the fleet to be all low-floor ramp access rather than less for a number of reasons. Easy, good for the customers, better from a maintenance standpoint. Lifts always have issues, have problems, you know, so the ramp is sort of the direction we want to go. So I thought, you know, if we're going to spend the money for a lease, which is a decent amount of money, and we can put a portion of the lease towards a purchase if we decided to purchase them. So that's sort of what we had wanted to do. Now, since this came out, we've got some new information because we really were rushing. I don't know, do I need to go into more of the background about why is this happening? You probably read all those.
We know, we know.
We know. So what's happened most recently, that was like this morning, we learned that we can't lease the low floors for six months. We can only lease them for a year because they don't have as many, you might, you could probably explain it better because you talked to Kim.
Well, they don't, they don't have the volume that they do on a regular bus. So there's just not enough of them around. They can't afford to do a six-month lease. It's already touch and go on a six-month lease on a regular bus.
So if we want to lease them and they're, it's going to cost us, we'd have to do it for a year. It's a 43.87, I think it was, which comes to like over $200,000 to lease them for a year. Or you just say, forget that, we'll lease the high floor and we won't purchase them. And then you're out $96,000 approximately. Or the other option is to actually just purchase them. And purchase the buses outright, they are 87. I can't remember the numbers. My numbers are not right.
Are they available? Yes. I talked to, I talked to the Korean Bus Sales rep in Candy. And she said three of them are already out at, at Korean Bus Sales locations. One of them's still at the factory, just finishing up. But all four are ready to go.
And are they new?
They're all new, it's 2017s.
Do we know, Cynthia, you were talking about, we could, we could either purchase them, you know, outright? And I don't know if I heard those two of the numbers you mentioned. If we would even the, however, if we lease them for a year instead of six months, what is the purchase value at the end of...
They, whether they, Don has some folks he's worked with, he would give them a 50% towards the purchase. But typically, it's about 40% towards the purchase.
I think she said 54, 55.
Did she might have seen that one? Okay.
When do you think, I mean, if we would go that route? And we look a year down the line with, you know, looking at our inventory now with 450,000, 400,000. You know, when we, are we going to be in a position in another year to add or replace four additional buses? I'm trying to figure out so we don't throw all the money away.
Well, and I'm, I'm proposing that given the nature of our fleet of buses, which is really, really poor and we're constantly going through this, that we need to step back and take a serious look at, do we want to continue this pattern? Or do we want to borrow from the county and purchase a fleet of new buses, starting here with these four? But purchasing a fleet of new buses and then through the process of the grant money each year, making the payment back to the county for that purchase. So that we, the county would have the resources to go out and purchase the buses. The transit system would have the ability to make a payment back to the county for that purchase. Not all of it at once, but over a period of years. And we could certainly, we could put together a purchase agreement that would facilitate doing that. To me, that makes a lot more sense than us every other month, we're looking at, what are we going to do? We're going to go scrounge a bus from somebody? Let's get a fleet that we can count on. And then, just like we do with our computers, set up a regular process of replacement. And then we can be selling buses to people that are in our position rather than us out there trying to fight.
Well, and that's the question I was getting to. Are we better off going a year lease purchase? Or are we better off just purchasing them out and calling it good?
We're way better off purchasing because look how much money.
Because we're going to throw that money away on lease.
Yeah, you're, you're going to be throwing away at least $100,000.
Well, that's, you know, I have to go with...
If not more.
Still, my thing would be, you know, if we need, we're going to need to just buy one.
And I really believe strongly that we need to take a serious look at just a replacement of our fleet, period. If else we sit down...
I had planned to prepare that and I just didn't have that done, but I think that's...
Buying a quantity like that, I'm sure we can get a pretty good price on them, better than buying them once a season, two seasons. If we're buying a fleet, I'm sure that we can negotiate a pretty good deal. Right, Don?
The question is though, we can't do the entire fleet now.
Right, no.
So the loan idea is for the entire fleet. But for these four, are we going to...
Purchase them.
Purchase them.
Purchase them.
For the lease.
With some money that you're going to extend the transit from the general fund.
That was my other question on, on this, maybe I just read wrong or it was a little different than what I thought I would see. So according to item number six, it says that the Board of Directors approval to provide funding for First Transit to lease the buses. Now, would YCTA be purchasing the buses or First Transit?
If we did the lease, we would have done it through First Transit.
We would lease, you guys would purchase the buses and we, I mean, you could, we'd lease the buses through you.
Yes.
But if we purchased them...
We will purchase them. And then the way our contract is set up is we do lease the buses. We purchase the buses because we're the entity that's able to get grants and do that. Then we lease the buses through our contract to First Transit.
However, the Board Commissioners will have to approve the transfer of funds to the transit budget. And then the YCTA Board of Directors will have to approve the purchase of the buses. So there'll be two separate actions.
So and how many we have? Six, how many do you have?
Six are incoming, two, two are supposed to be shipped. Although mid-May, although I just got yesterday saying that one of them is waiting for something. So, you know, that's why they don't give you a term, you will get this bus by X date. They, they give you, it's anywhere between nine months for the small, nine to 12 months and 12 to 18 months for the large.
Hardly just work out the bar, we wonder what we have to do with buying these, any buying these four?
Because with, with these four, and the six, the ten buses ready to, to replace the rest of the fleet that we need, I think that makes so much more sense. And we can get this transit system up on footy. Because we've never done...
There'll still be a few more that will revisit that when we look at the whole fleet.
But I really get the 10 new ones in here.
Are we going to need to have the board meet in as the contractor review board? Because this is for the recurrent process.
We're moving faster than, and it's on the state, this bus is on the state.
If you use the state contract.
It's the state contract. The thing I was concerned about was timing. Like even when I purchased the buses that are coming, we did it off the state.
And Don, you said you still have a lot and they're quite a process.
Whereas if we're just paying foreign...
They're like on a lot in Washington.
They're in four different locations.
But there's, but I mean, they're, they're there, they're not...
But they're west coast and can get here within two weeks. So it's not like waiting nine days.
They will be, as soon as we give them the, the go-in.
Cynthia?
Yeah.
They're all new.
They're all new, yeah. And they don't have any miles they've ever leased them, not even a few miles.
But that they get from New Mexico, they may.
Yeah, but they'll have those miles.
So then it would just be a matter of bringing the price agreement terms before the YCTA board and they would approve the purchase.
We need to negotiate that. But the, what the board needs to do is approve the transfer of funds to YCTA to make that purchase. And then negotiate and...
Actually, you're going to be transferring the funds to the transit budget, not to YCTA. And I'd like to ask a question about that. So originally, I had suggested the county, the general fund contingency. But I'd like to change that if you're open to that after talking to Ken. You have a $900,000 expenditure line in 10-02, which is your discretionary budget. And we haven't tapped that. And that's a little bit of an easier way for us to manage this transfer.
For this particular...
For these buses.
Yeah.
And that would take you $900,000. Would you be open to us using that line?
Sure.
I think if that's the easiest place with the less house, do that.
It'll be approximately 300 cents.
So we'll give you the language for Thursday, Caroline.
I think that's great.
Is this in the form, there's some discussion about whether or not it would be a loan, if you paid back. Is this a loan or is this outright transfer?
This is an outright transfer to Transit.
For these four.
Moving forward, if we look at the larger purchase, then that would be in the form of a loan to Transit with a repayment schedule built into that.
And I'll need to talk to you about that. Because before the gym budget adoption, I'll need some figures for you. I won't need it by next week.
That'll be next year's, next year's budget.
I do have a copy of the details that you had asked for as far as the buses that were down. So if anybody owns a copy of that, that's, that's huge.
It did take much figuring out when I looked at some of the mileage of these buses.
It doesn't matter what kind of means the bus is for.
We kind of started the system with old buses, so it's sort of this sort of...
Well, Commissioner Crispin's right. If we, if we do that and then get a loan for more, then we, then we go on to a complete rotation, you know, good replacement plan, just like the computers.
Once we structure that repayment plan, we continue that so that it continues to purchase new buses going forward. We put them on a replacement dependent on the ones that we're using for going to Fortland. They're going to get the most miles on them, they'll be on a shorter replacement schedule. But we buy the buses the type we want, the services they're going to render and be flexible. So then we've got, it just makes so much more sense.
Okay. Is there anything else on item D6? So we'll move that ahead and we'll...
These are my little dance when they got here.
YCTA, you're working with us. They really do. And Cynthia, you work as always.
Work these deals and you know, you know the players better than we do. So you make sure they get us the best absolutely we can.
And we appreciate your help.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all, it's really...
Thanks a lot.
We have, we want Kelly on our side, we'll send her out if we have to. Go make a sim, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Renee. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item D7. Pastor Dax, your house had contacted me asking if we could basically adopt that resolution claiming May 3rd National Day of Prayer. So what he sent us was the cities, the one he had sent to the mayor that he's agreed to sign. And we will just change the language and adopt that resolution if it's okay on the, on Thursday. Is that something that's agreeable to all?
It's okay with me.
It's okay with you? All right.
I pray every day anyway.
We'll move that to...
I pray to make it through the day.
Uh, we'll move that to the consent agenda?
I did get a email again from the city of Lafayette, wanting to know about their national night out, and basically them, and I talked to Andy, wanted them for their cities, and if we don't want to do them individually per city, you know, we talked earlier about doing one for every city in the county put together. The two cities I've talked to so far said we just don't want them. Because they're supposed, because they wanted them for their community as a community.
And I, you know, it's not bad having one, one night, but cities do like to have their own identity, and I think it...
So I told them we could take, I told them, I said, I talked to their commissioners,